Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the December study session. Welcome. Nice to see all these someone smiling faces. I will go ahead and call the meeting director as the clerk for a roll call, please.
Thank you. Director Brett Echols.
Here.
Vice Secretary Robert Ooten.
Here.
Secretary Arthur Perry.
Here.
Vice President Arlene Schaefer. President Mike Schaefer.
Here, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, public comments since the time that I for for anyone in the audience would like to speak on items on that are nominally agenda. But are relevant to the city's sanitary district. Um, we have no request, but we do have someone. Adam Chair.
Hi, my name is Sue Lester. I don't know if you'll allow me to speak because I I'm actually here to thank Director Echols. I know you're doing a presentation. Um, but my name's Sue Lester. I'm on CAC. I've been on it for six years. I'm the chairperson. I'm here not speaking on behalf of them. I'm here as a resident. And I just want to become and say thank you to Director Echols. You kind of came out of left wheeled and ran for like, no, you didn't receive any meeting or you didn't really participate with the lot of it all. And you hit the ground running and took your own time to educate yourself on all the issues. You were professional and prepared and you asked great questions. And I feel that you represented your district and the CAC fantastically. You um asked questions maybe that not the whole community was interested in, but a certain sector of the community. And I think that that's really important. And I just wanted to say thank you for that. And I I hope that, um, congratulations to Director Welchire, who's going to be sworn in. She's not sworn in yet. Um, and again, to George Perry for continuing on. And I kind of hope that um the new director does what you did and prepares herself and gets educated on her own time and comes prepared and really gives it all. And so I just wanted to take the time to say that you were appreciated. And even if you didn't vote the way that I wanted to vote or um, the way the CAC recommended that we wanted the director to vote, you directors to vote, you always explained why. And letting people know why you don't agree with them usually only takes minutes. And it really means a lot. So thank you to all of you for your service. Thank you to you, I'm sorry, so happy for you and your family and happy holidays to all of you. Thank you. I appreciate you.
Thank you. So I guess it's too late for me to tell.
He's small, real tiny.
And and frankly, um, I wouldn't stop. We appreciate that, that input. And I'll save my comments for Director Echols later.
At the parking lot.
No, no, no. All right, you are at items of study, item C. First item. Scott, please.
Just approve them.
Uh, it's just approve the minutes, uh, director, uh, Mr. President.
C and. Proud for approval. Yes, November thirteen, November thirteen seconds, twelve, 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 twenty twenty three. So these are some previous study sessions minutes. The motion is second, attorney of the discussion, anyone from the public. Seeing that all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose. That motion carries unanimous. Then we have approval of the board of directors meeting from November twenty fifth. Almost approved by November twenty fifth minutes. Discussion, they vote from the public. I see no one, all those in favor.
Aye.
Oppose. That motion also carries unanimous. Now that, yeah, but this is a new process.
We're approving these minutes because Dr. Echols was part of those meetings. So since this is his last meeting, we're allowing him to vote in those minutes.
All right, um, we're all in study session and we're all here for that's to uh here are code enforcement officer for David. Thank you. As David takes the microphone, uh, just want to publicly congratulate you on your recent uh designation.
Third certification.
Certification as an official code enforcement officer.
Thank you very much, sir. I appreciate that.
Well, that that shows your dedication to what we do and and the board sincerely appreciates you taking that extra for you.
And I appreciate that. It was one of my goals. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So I have two reports for uh to present this month. Uh, I'll start off with October's. Uh, this report summarizes three uh ordinance enforcement topics covering scavenging graffiti and trash container enforcement. Uh, the code enforcement officer focuses efforts on patrols in various parts of the community. The goal is to identify and deter instances of scavenging and residential trash carts left in the public view. Uh, the month of October, I encountered six scavengers uh throughout the community with the mats enclosed. Any questions on that? I don't know if you noticed, but the scavenging activity has increased within the city limits.
I'm just, uh, I'm just gonna ask you that with the advent of the of the recyclable carts. You think Pete, uh, we had talked about that. It was when we were in my video, we talked about the availability now and the the easy mark. So you have seen some increase.
It's 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 gone up considerably. Uh, they just know which cart to go to. Most everybody is, you know, storing their their recyclables in a bag and then throws that into the container. So it just makes it really easy for them.
Yes.
David.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is it a certain part of the city?
Uh, citywide right now.
Citywide, okay. Just wanted to know.
And these guys I've seen have have, you know, bags taller than me full of recyclables. So um uh, the next topic is trash container enforcement. Uh, my directive has been not to, you know, attack people for trash carts in public view because of our rollout right now. And so, um, I did tag forty-three carts um, prior to the to the rollout. Um, and then that will conclude it for October. Uh, the month of November, the same thing. This report summarizes major points for three ordinance enforcement topics covering scavenging graffiti and trash container enforcement. In the month of November, I caught another six scavengers. Again, citywide, um, they're all first time contacts. Uh, been very surprised. Yeah, I'm getting it from all ages now. Any questions on that so far?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, just question on you mentioned in that month, first timers, which we discussed over the past several years about like warning, put the stuff back behind the way. Uh, what's the kind of plans? Is this only probably going to get worse in the city? You know, most likely, not actually citing. I mean, are we looking at second and third time offenders again? What's kind of the plan?
Absolutely. I I think we'll we'll talk to that as a group to to discuss, you know, maybe our third offense, maybe, you know, we're we're going to be citing. Unfortunately, um, the last two citations, they they never came through for us here. I mean, again, I don't think we're gonna even get water or a rock for it.
The the threat of such might go somewhere, so.
It it did deter the last ones. So that that was a win for us, in my opinion.
Perfect, thank you.
Trash container, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, um. You have a new association in with your certification. The blue card is common in most communities. Um, and I don't know how aggressive, you know, Tonga Valley airline new pitches in regards to what you're doing for us. Uh, but are there, do you have in mind any way to uh get that information from the adjacent communities? Maybe through your association?
Absolutely. I can reach out to to other agencies that I know Santa Ana has a solid waste code enforcement officer, uh, basically just for, you know, thirteen eighty-three. So um I can reach out to the association though and touch base with them.
Yeah, I mean, that kind of policy.
Absolutely. And I'm sure that they're 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 probably not understanding facing, you know, the problems.
You know, there's one of the things that I've I've seen and I'd ask you to keep your eye, and I know you do already. Um, the individual folks you you catch, you know, the the guy on the bike or the whatever. Um, that's one thing. I've noticed a few more of the organized trucks driving around the guys that are that it's their business to do this stuff, you know, and if you can keep your eye and let us know how that's going, that might carry out. I'm sure you guys have seen this in some of the other jurisdictions you work with. I mean, it it's a lucrative business, looks like.
And I know the biggest officer is encountering a lot of, and I don't want to say commercial, you know, scavengers. I'm keeping my eye out. Basically, everybody I've been catching is just like a mom. Again, a lot of senior. Well, all the bases have been new. Careful, I will refer to seniors. Of the second half, it's going to be the trash container enforcement month of November. I only had nine cases that I, you know, issued notices, but those were cases that came in the month of the office.
That'll conclude for both reports. Any any other questions? Any other questions for David? Thank you. I appreciate.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, but thank you, Director Echols personally. I appreciate you, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, um. The report on the three car rollout.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. President. So this is your monthly status report on the three cart rollout program that began on October seventh. And the good news is that we're coming to the finish line. Should be completed by this Friday. We're over twenty-three thousand uh blue lid recycling cars have been delivered. Uh, at the time we submitted the staff report, which was in December fourth, we had approximately one hundred and forty complaints that were logged, uh, which is still less than one percent. We consider the entire program. Uh, most of the complaints or majority of the complaints have have been um failing to remove the old mixed waste cards. I did run into a resident yesterday. Um, she complained she didn't like the size of her card, so we'll switch it out to a larger card. But so there's some, um, you know, uh, small complaints there that that C N R has been uh uh, willing to resolve quite quickly. And Mike Carey is here to, uh, if you to answer any questions you may have or provide any more information. But, uh, the good news is that we're 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 coming to the end of this program.
Um, I don't know who can answer this, but we had proposed or part of the plan was changes would be made after the first year. Uh, do you have any idea on the number of changes you're gonna have to do or are you guys keeping that long?
Yeah, Mike, if you go to the podium, please, and trust the president.
As we are cracking and logging the request for January, we do have probably three week, three weeks worth of scheduled exchanges. The positive news is we're receiving more requests for larger recycling cars, which is what what we were hoping for.
Yeah.
Uh, they're now realizing they wanted, they're putting more of the recycling in the auto and the trash.
I I don't know about any. We've no sense. It's a huge rate. That recycle cart fills up right now. Whereas the landfill cart, I don't put it out. There's no need to.
So we have been honoring requests prior to January as well. So we've been uh working those into our regular.
Well, I, Mike, um, I I think there's some additional education that would be an opportunity for us. And that is, um, I'm sure we told the public or our customers, you know, that they can't exchange the carts and make wins. But that information may have come out, you know, two months ago. But what I'd like to encourage staff to do is um re-publish and try to get the information that Mike was talking about back out to the public. Because that's the most common um neighbor mind concern. You know, they want a different sized cart, generally a larger cart. Um, but they're, you know, they've forgotten how to do it. So I can tell them. Um, but if there's, you know, three neighbors on my block and only block alone, there's going to be a lot of activity, potential activity, and and then think of the other um try to re-entice them about what, how to do that.
Agreed.
How would we do that?
Uh, we can do a very.
Call C N R, you know, I mean, how do we let the public know what to do?
Newsletters, social media, um, C N R can help us. I mean, there's a wide variety of 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 campaign, um, that we can use.
Customer guide, so we can incorporate it into that.
But I think I think need to do that part of it sooner than later, if in fact the guide will come out after all this is done.
Yeah, I think, uh, the city could help us out as well, um, getting out the the information. So, yeah, we can, we can, um, I can sit down with staff and we can submit the information immediately.
Thank you.
This, um, I think in my complex, we went through this, half of them sent in the cars requesting the right. Anything, they didn't request anything. That's one of the problems that we have. But C N R has already rectified a lot of that already. So I'm happy for that.
Good, awesome.
You know, one of the things we talked about in the planning stages was you guys were gonna put a sticker on the landfill cart.
We're going back and doing that part of the capital.
Okay. And I know I lost out on my cut up the cardboard sticker, but that's okay. It's amazing to see what people put on top of their, you know, you drive down the street. There's a lot of people gonna be happy at Christmas with those big Amazon boxes, I'm sure.
We began our um latest round of route reviews, residential route reviews yesterday. We've had um the report back with that there was many interested residents in the program. There was no complaints. They were interested in how they could do better. Recycling of this artist, a little positive history.
Yeah, that's really good.
Thank you. Uh, just, you mentioned a couple, but the number one issue that the the residents are bringing forth and what one or two issues and what what's kind of been the plan? I know we're gonna make some changes after January, but up to this point, what's been going on?
The, again, as Scott mentioned, the the removal of existing landfill carts. And we've been erring on the side of with those. If we come to an alleyway or an area where there's multiple carts out, we're actually leaving them rather than removing all the carts. We don't want to make somebody's only landfill cart. We would rather address it on the back end when they call and say, now I got any carts. Yeah, um, we've been pretty nimble and being able to go out and get those right away once we receive that notification.
Take away their cart, their neighbor's backyard, and they have some bags and that. So thank you for that.
The, uh, any, any particular problems with the apartment, wealthy family, or they're probably condominiums? Um, I have a, uh, very close relative, one of my kids who lives in a condo, and he's okay. They're, I use my, they're all okay with what they're getting, but are you seeing anything different in those places?
We've had a few concerns of space constraints of, um, right, where, but the three cars we found out and and done reviews at a couple condo complexes, um, we did a mobile home park last, last week. There was a concern with that. How we helped, help the resident uh manage the location of our car.
Good. Okay, um, I think overall, kudos to you guys and to you guys, staff. I mean, you always anticipate the worst when you do something as major. It's what we did with this. And I think it's gotten pretty darn smooth and and the folks in my area, they're happy. They they like, they like being able to do that. They have that. I I think a lot of the misconception was, I think a lot of people here in our community thought we didn't recycle because everything was going into one. Now they've got this mindset that they got a recyclable cart. And it's making people feel pretty good about things. So, good job.
Can I, um, I notice the first day we recycle for you. Is that going to continue now that we have, um, um, or is that important to continue? Is that, that is important to continue now that we have the the blue card?
We have a series of four um rotatable banners, uh, or in this case now a glad minister that we can replace angle without the Christmas tree right there now. The ones that you're seeing were the old um D M S recycler, and the bracket decals. It was stickers that um stick on the truck that intention to have the magnets so you can rotate by the next year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service, Brett.
Thank you.
I'm grateful.
Appreciate you.
Anything else for all?
No.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I'm buying, receiving file of November fifth certified election results.
Yes, Mr. President. Members of the board, before you are the November fifth, twenty twenty-four election results that we received from the Red Shore Voters Office. In this election, Division Two and Division Four seats were available. The successful candidate for Division Two was Nicole Welchire. And Director Art Perry's seat ran uncontested, so he is now reappointed to his position. At this time, it's appropriate for the board to receive and follow these results so that we can go through with the rest of the formalities of the day.
Good. Uh, any questions or any comment? Thank you. That will be received and filed. All right, let's go on to I D ceremonial matters. Um, this is the time and place that uh we would like to obviously recognize our department colleague. Um, I won't repeat what's been said since I think everybody's gone up before is eloquently described your participation on this board and uh thank you for your four years of service. They were exemplary. Um, again, thank you. We, we're gonna miss you and uh just have a big housewarming party.
We're gonna go. We'll do.
Like a Christmas party. Yeah, um, I have a couple of, go ahead.
Well, you can pick it if you want.
No, 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 right here. In front of my elders.
And I'd like to thank Director Echols for his service. Uh, board members' responsibilities are producer responsibility, keeping timing and policymaking. And I think that, um, uh, he's he's done all of that very importantly. Um, in particular, I think with Director Echols, it's brought to us his uh uh, his his knowledge of structural, um, um, in insurance. You know, the Mike also adds to to our our director's uh education. Um, his contractor background, um, you know, his his supportive emergencies, uh, worker safety and finance. Um, you know, I, um, I don't echo all of you, but, you know, I think I can see the tremendous debt on. So I I've appreciated the dialogue we've had on. Um, I think it agrees ninety-eight point three percent of our.
You would have the exact.
How would you, I mean, engineer over there?
Well, I want to wish well. Um, thank you for your service. I'm looking forward to the, um, seeing you on one of daddy's bandits.
Oh, boy.
Thanks for that. Thank you.
So thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Anyone from the public wishing to speak? Seeing them, we'll close public comment portion. We have a couple of feelings for you, Director. Um, let's do that.
Yes, please.
I would have been dressed up for you this morning, but I never get dressed up.
Wouldn't you, I wouldn't want something completely changed.
Um, first of all, a proclamation. So be comfortable. I'm gonna read this probably. No way.
It's a little small.
Just a proclamation recommending your service. We'll give that to you.
There we go.
You, and then, uh, uh, this is from you guys?
From staff.
From staff? From staff? You guys folded that little truck?
Get a lot of sound. It's actually really good.
So you kind of, amazing. And, uh, those are all little momentous for you. Thank you again, buddy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And before you guys kick me out of the room, can I have a word?
We're still in session.
Well, thank you, everyone. And, uh, yeah, I think my head got too big, so it may not fit up the door. But thank you for all the kind words and, uh, these incredible gifts. Uh, today, woke up this morning, was a little bit, little bit of a challenge. My eyes goes, you're sad, aren't you? It's, yeah. And, uh, not because I'm not excited for the future and blah blah, but this has been four years as, uh, uh, Sue Lester mentioned. I mean, I kind of came out of nowhere and was successful and get feet here, but look at these folks. You have two former mayors, uh, the 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 golf extraordinary, uh, community leader, uh, you know, and and our resident engineer who's been in this industry for quite some time. And then, yeah, me. And, uh, so something didn't fit here, but over the course of the four years, uh, we all fit. And, uh, to to thank each and every one of you for sitting up here with me, uh, teaching me, educating me, working with me, and disagreeing with me kindly. That's what it's about. Um, our staff, uh, to our new, uh, director coming in, I wish you all the best and congratulations. And you will find real quick. I've been part of a couple different organizations, both private and public, and there's not a better staff than the one we've got here. Incredible. Um, over the past four years, we've accomplished more than I ever thought we would. And I don't think we talked about it enough because the staff just does such tremendous job, but we pass balanced budgets without using reserves. We're bowling out this three cart system, which is, no one thought, I didn't think it could go as smoothly as it has. Not without hiccups, but the hiccups are always solved by staff and our partnership at C R R and R. I mean, we've done some incredible things. We we, thanks to C R R and R and all that you've, uh, worked with me and educated me on and we we renegotiated a contract with you all that works for you, works for us, and most importantly, works for the Ray Pairs. I mean, that's what it's about teamwork. And up here, we can, uh, discuss, debate, sometimes disagree, the two point two percent of the time, Director, you know, I've talked about, but, uh, I'm just proud of the work we've done in the past four years. I intended to come up here and work for four and see where it led me. And I was on the doorstep of doing the metaphor. I love it here. Uh, life through some, uh, opportunities, which are all good. So I'm happy to take advantage of those. And that's the only reason I really wanted, I hadn't, didn't, didn't run for the CDN. But again, I congratulate the new director and, uh, you're gonna do great up here. Got a lot of wisdom, a lot of experience, and I just want to thank our staff again, uh, the incredible, our general manager, Scott. Uh, wow, this, this guy's good. So, uh, and, uh, to every, each and every one of you, thank you and thank you for the kind words and, uh, it should, don't give the politician, no, but Mike will sit up here. I know we got some business to take here, but again, thank you. And, uh, I will, I'll be around. I'll be around. I have a feeling. So, um, maybe next year, like I said, next year's Christmas party at the new house. We'll, uh, thank you again. I really appreciate it, you guys. Take me on the way out.
Recession, yep.
We are now going to take our recess and we get things going.
Yep.
Uh, thank you all for your patience and attendance, and we'll be back in a few minutes. So, yeah, we'll make two.
Thank you.
Did uh, Luke bring you coffee this morning?
No, he did not.
Thank you, Brett. Uh, we're going, we're going to go ahead and do oath of office for Dr. Perry first.
And we are at Iowa in Kansas on the agenda and that will begin with the swearing in of office.
Yes, thank you. Director Perry, if you'll please stand, raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, Arthur Perry, do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies, foreign and domestic. And that I will be bear true faith and allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. And that I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully. Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter. Thank you. Congratulations. Madam Director, if you'll step up to the podium for me, please. If you two will raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Nicole Wiltshire, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies, foreign and domestic. And that I will bear true faith and allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. And that I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully. Discharge the duties. Upon which I am about to enter. Thank you, Madam Director. If you'll please take your seat at the dais.
Mike has been here.
Jason. You know what she's getting into now, right?
Yes, I do.
Our spouses all, uh, let us know. Okay, um. We're on uh item number three.
F two.
Item number two, uh Board of Directors nominations and appointment of office. We have a motion for president. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor? That motion carries.
I'd like to nominate Bob Wu as Vice President.
I'll second that. Discussion. All those in favor? Posed. Motion carries unanimous. Uh, I would move the nomination of Arthur Perry as Board Secretary. Discussion. All those in favor? Posed. Motion carries unanimous. And then I'll also nominate um Arlene Schaefer as Assistant Secretary. I'll second that. Discussion. All those in favor? Posed? Okay, um.
But the big thing is, she's another woman. For twenty some odd years.
Uh, you've nominated Arlene um as Assistant Secretary. There isn't those such jobs. But I believe that the Assistant Secretary should be by policy be changed.
To what assistant?
To assistant, yes.
You double check with Alan and make sure that that's.
I continue to be called, I used to continue to be called Vice Secretary. And I think that was a policy change that we made ten fifteen years ago.
Okay, let's look into that. Okay. We need to make the change. Thank you. Thank you, Director Engineer. Yeah, we have that set. Uh, item number three.
Um, Mr. President, can we please do the appointments to OC San and Sarfa as well for the the show grabs? Thank you.
Um, I would nominate um Director Wu to be the primary appointee to Orange County Sanitation. On second that motion. Okay, all those in favor? Posed?
Alternate.
All I would, I would nominate Art Perry as Art Perry as the alternate to the Orange County Sanitation District. Arlene, get down. Discussion. All those in favor? Posed?
Sarfa?
Sarfa.
I'll nominate uh Director Perry to be um the um.
Can we, for the benefit of our new director, can you tell us her, give us the full title of Sarfa?
Santa Ana Flood Control Protection Agency. I've been on for, since it started thirty years ago. And it's coming to an end in next year. Raise the dam. It'll still be run by the Corps of Engineers for five hundred years because of, just to make sure it's smooth.
Uh, all those in, uh, take a bow.
Uh, we had a motion. We need a second, please.
Second, I'll second. All those in favor of pointing art? I, I. Posed? Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you. I believe that you do.
I'll, I'll nominate Bob Wu to be the alternate to Sarfa. I'll second that. All those in favor? Okay.
Mr. Box only had to come once in all these times because I usually make a move.
You are Mr. President. You know, I just figured that's what's confusing me with someone. I'm, I'm working out my laptop, the agenda, and it's different than printed. That's okay. That's just my, not bringing my glasses, I think more than anything. Okay, we are now to item three. Uh, consider approving the twenty twenty five meeting and office closure calendar, changing the third night for monthly study session.
I'll take it. Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, before you is the twenty twenty five meeting calendar. There are three items of note um that we would possibly want to change the meeting dates of the regularly scheduled meetings. For May, the regular meeting has been moved because of the Memorial Day holiday. So we are going to move it to Tuesday, May twenty seventh. In the month of August, that is when the board attends the C S C A um annual conference. So we would like to request moving that to. Yes, August eighteenth. So we're gonna move it up one week. Um, for November, we currently have the study session scheduled for Tuesday, November eleventh. Which is the Veterans Day holiday, so we would like to ask the board to consider moving that to Monday, November tenth. Or to Wednesday, November twelfth, whichever the board decides. And then in the month of December, the board meeting falls on Monday, December twenty second, which is typically the Christmas weekend or week. And we wanted to see if the board would like to move that meeting date for next year to December fifteenth.
I'll just make a comment. Everything looks fine and recommends changes. I would prefer in November to have a study session. I know it's a Monday and everything, but um. On a, on a Monday. Any other questions on that? I'll leave. November ten, November ten. Any comments from session on it?
My name, as you may recall, is Chip Mocher. He used to attend more of your meetings than I do now. Um, the the comments actually on the second part of. As if there seem to be three parts, you're also going to make a decision as to whether you want to change the study session time. And in that case, you are considering reverting to something that this refused to do, meeting at nine thirty in the morning instead of eight. Which was partially comedy. The, the middle part of this is to approve the Friday closure program. And I just want to remind the board that that also is something that's not the tradition. Of the district or many areas that was operating five days a week. And the change is intended, I think, to be convenient for the employees, which is a good thing. It's less convenient for the public. And unusual combination secret is closed during under Friday. So not necessarily a day, but sometimes. I'm considering calendars, my honor, reconsider, but that's the best model. Or there might be some other. Five days a week, I suppose, for many years.
Thank you. I apologize. I was going to meet you on the items separately, so that's why I did it that way.
Mr. President, I do have one, one uh request uh for the board to consider. So uh, beginning in January or. Beginning the first uh of the year, we are going to start planning our strategic plan for twenty twenty five thirty. Uh, I would like to, if it's okay with the board, have a special meeting in January to kick off that plan. Uh, so if the board can agree on a, on a special meeting sometime in January, uh, we'd appreciate that. It's whatever you're available. Yeah, that's what I'd like to see. Because salvage it today, that'd be helpful. So if there are dates that that everyone's available, um, that'd be. Whatever's available for you.
Well, we could be tough on the sixth. You guys, look at your schedule. I could, I could do it this, the thirteen. I can do it almost any day. As, as long as it's in the morning.
Yes, uh, well, it's up, it's sure, it's up to you.
You guys look at your calendar.
Thirteen, fine.
Yeah, thirteen could be fine with me.
What, what time of the day?
Whatever time you want.
The morning.
Like nine or seven. Thirteen, so special meeting on Monday, thirteenth.
Yeah, and I would expect at least two hours.
Let's get our time set first and then come back. But the kickoff, the planning process. Monday, thirteenth of January. And we'll come back and establish.
Nine o'clock. Nine AM, January thirteenth.
Well, we want to talk about the study session first, and we'll. Question on. The closure, the off, the Friday office closure. I noticed there are a couple of months where we're closed every Friday or. Like, if you look at April and October, that's the liaison meetings. Is that, is that one?
Yes, sorry, the shading might look a little different in print, but every quarter you have that third Friday liaison meeting. So.
Well, would you give us a copy?
We will. Yes, once you approve the dates, we'll give you a final copy.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna do these three individually, if that's okay. So we have a motion in the second for the calendar, didn't we?
Who was the second? I don't think that we did, Mr. President. If we'll do that again, please.
So the safety issue of the calendar, I need a motion to approve the calendar is presented by staff. Second. You're the first issue.
Thank you.
Question on that one item. All those in favor? And so calendars established. Second item would be the change of time. Um, as Mr. Mocher indicated, we had changed the study session time from nine thirty to eight. To help Mr. Appleton's work schedule.
Yeah.
Um, I would propose that we go back to uh, not the nine thirty, but a nine o'clock start time for the study sessions. And I'll, I'll move that we move the study sessions back to nine o'clock. Other discussion on that.
The only discussion I have is you're making on the motions down there and not this one.
Alright, so all those in favor of study session beginning in January eight?
January fourteenth, sorry, January fourteenth.
All those in favor? Posed? Alright, then that's established, which means we'll have your special meeting on the thirteenth at nine o'clock. Now I forget what the third item. See, I lost track of it. You don't remind me where I, where I need to be.
That's it.
That's it.
We just had two items.
Are you, are you planning to send us a updated copy?
Yes, we will.
Okay, um. Closing items, oral communications and directors' comments. Uh, all of the, the director's comments with a congratulations again. Welcome aboard. Love the stuff. I hit you like the whirlwind, but first couple of months, so any of us that can help. Just get all those. And Director Appleton's invention. Without, without, without doubt, we have the best staff in these special. Congratulations. Other comments, wishing everyone a happy holiday, no matter which holiday you celebrate. I hope it's a good one and a safe one. And uh, that.
Do I need to repeat uh my request for the policy change in the main?
It's funny because the title vice used to be pretty common, Vice Mayor. And culturally, that's changed. People don't want to be, because of the military connotation with vice. State of committee. Okay. Other comments, ladies and gentlemen? If not, we'll ignore them. Thank you all again. Thank you all for being here.